For the record, I will be signing the following, an agreement with the City of Spring Hill, for the public improvement of 199th Street from Ridgeview Road to Renner Road. That concludes notes for the record. We'll move to our agenda item. The clerk will please read the consent agenda item.
Chairman, with this being a call, there is no consent agenda.
We have a called agenda, excuse me. All right, item number one.
Consider approving the November 3, 2022 business session minutes. All commissioners were present.
Do I hear a motion? Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the November 3, 2022 business session meetings.
Hanslick, second.
Allenbrand made the motion. Hanslick seconded the motion to approve the minutes as presented. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Ilert, aye. I have seven votes in favor. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number two. Application number SW 22-254-PPFPMC. Wayne Manikoff, applicant, and Dell and Tammy Morgan landowners requesting a preliminary and final plat for two residential lots on approximately 40.2 acres to be known as Morgan Acres on property zoned RUR Rural District located at the southwest corner of 167th Street and Evening Star Road, Section 23 Township 14, Range 21.
Ms. Cricks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the County Commission, Michelle Cricks with Johnson County Planning, and this is a request for a preliminary and final plat for two residential lots on approximately 40 acres on property zoned Rural District. The property is located southwest of 167th Street and Evening Star Road, east of the county line, as you can see here on the vicinity map. Here is an aerial view of the subject property with an overlay of the preliminary plat. The property is flanked by 167th Street to the north and Evening Star Road to the east, both which are 22-foot wide gravel roads with a 35 mile an hour speed limit. The property currently has a single-family home and four residential, or, excuse me, four accessory buildings, and the pond you see here is approximately three and a half acres and would remain entirely on Lot 2. Here is a copy of the preliminary plat, and then here is a copy of the final plat. Staff reviewed the infrastructure requirements for this application and determined the plat complies with all required zoning and subdivision regulations. No plat exceptions or waivers were requested. Planning staff recommended approval of this item. The Northwest Consolidated Zoning Board heard this project after October 26 hearing and recommended approval of both the preliminary and final plat with the stipulations outlined in your briefing sheet. No one from the public offered any comments. And that does conclude my presentation, and I'm available for questions. And the applicant is also here, present today, to answer questions as well. Thank you.
Questions of the staff? Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is in my district, and no one contested this, and it's been unanimously approved. So when you're ready, I'm ready for a motion.
The applicant present, any comments the applicant would like to make? All right, for the record, no comments from the applicant. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item? If not, it's back before the commission. A motion is in order. Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the preliminary and final plat for two residential lots to be known as Morgan Acres for the reasons and subject to speculations recommended by the Southwest Consolidated Zoning Board.
Myers, second.
Allenbrand made the motion. Myers seconded the motion to approve the application and the planning permits as recommended. Any further questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Ilert, aye. Seven votes in favor. Motion carried. Item number three.
Resolution number 094-22. Application number SE 22-242-CUPAU. Consider request from Tim Tucker, Phelps Engineering Incorporated applicant, on behalf of Fred Kibler of Anna Louise Briggs Trust landowner for a conditional use permit with a three-year term for an earth excavation and filling operation at 2600 199th Street on eight acres of the total 159.29 acres and zoned RUR Rural District.
Ms. Linniger.
Good morning. Michelle Linniger, County Planning Staff. As status, the application is for a conditional use permit for an earth excavation and fill use. This map shows the subject property. It's approximately 159 acres. It's outlined in blue along 199th Street, just west of the state line. Here's a close-up of the property with the aerials. As you can see, the area outlined in yellow is the only area of the site that's proposed to be excavated. It is eight acres of the 159 acres, and it is under Evergy overhead power lines. Evergy is aware of the activity and has provided the property owner guidelines for work within their easements. This is the site plan for the project. The details of it, it's eight one-acre cells that are shown to be excavated from south to north. No more than two cells will be open and active at one time. The process is to remove the first two feet of topsoil and to set it aside and take the next six feet out and bring it north to, generally to the Sundance Ridge subdivision in Overland Park for, fill dirt for the subdivision. And then take that rocky soil that is up in that subdivision, bring it back down, and fill it back into the cells, and then take the topsoil and put it back on top. This is undevelopable land, being that it is under the power lines, but it is in crop production, and so once the topsoil is put back on top, crop production will then continue again. The proposed hours of operation, excuse me, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., up to 40 trucks per day. They're typically going north, again, to the Sundance Ridge subdivision. Water application will be provided for dust control when necessary. Some things to note are that the northwestern corner is approximately 147 feet from the shared property line of the residential to the west. This exceeds the 100-foot requirement that is outlined in the regulations. The southern closest corner is about 745 feet to the western property line. Additionally, there are some trees and hedgerows along the shared western property line, which helps with the visual and the sound potential impact. At the November 2 Southeast Zoning Board meeting, two members of the public spoke in addition to the seven written comments. The main discussion was traffic along 199th Street and Mission Road, and then dirt left on the road. The dirt that's potentially left on the road is taken care of with the land disturbance permit that is obtained through Public Works, and that is one of the stipulations in the recommendation. The zoning board did add to the staff recommended stipulations that trucks shall use 199th Street East to State Line Road to go north to the site, based on comments from a few neighbors. Staff did not recommend a specific truck route as 199th Mission Road. Those are all arterial roads and are sufficient for truck traffic and currently handle truck traffic. The applicant is accepting of the stipulation as recommended by the zoning board, though it would be difficult for staff to enforce specific trucks going specific directions. The applicant is representative, and the applicant are both here to address any questions.
I understand the staff had a different opinion than the zoning board on that one item, but there is no problem going forward with this as recommended. Is that right?
We don't have any problem with the stipulation. It's just if it becomes an issue where we start to get a lot of complaints, it may be difficult to enforce.
All right, thank you. Ms. O'Hara?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, if it's going to Sundance, the obvious route would be up state line, but state line road, have you been out there? It's not full of potholes, it's craters.
Right.
And this has been an ongoing issue as to how to improve that, and that's Overland Park, that's in Overland Park.
Yes.
So that's going to be their problem, but are the trucks going to be able to navigate that? I would like to ask the applicants.
Okay, all right. Before we go to the applicant, are there other questions of the staff?
I do have some other questions. Noise, and this isn't your normal topsoil removal type of operation, and so this is going to be digging eight-foot trenches, and then you're going to take that and you're going to haul it up to Sundance. The noise of this, is this going to be an issue for the people that live close to it? I mean, that's a subdivision right to the west.
There are some things to take in consideration with the noise. There are some trees and hedgerows between the properties. The timeframe that they are looking at for the conditional use permit, it does exceed the distance that is prescribed in the code for the excavation. I think the one big difference for this as opposed to topsoil removal is that there's no processing on site, and there's also just a very small portion of the entire site that's being utilized. Typically with the topsoil, you have that almost entire site being utilized for many years. This is a short-term, dig out that rock, bring more rock back, and be done with it. So as staff, we feel that with all of those taken into consideration. And additionally, this is not a 24/7 type of activity. They may have activity for like three weeks, because that's the process that they are in, in the subdivision, where they're digging a handful of foundations. And so you may see activity for three weeks, and then you don't see any activity for quite a while. So it's not constant, it's short-term, and the setbacks and the trees will definitely...
And there is dust mitigation.
Yes, that is included, both in the land disturbance permit and the conditions that are in the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is the applicant present? Any comments you'd like to make?
My name's Tim Tucker, T-I-M-T-U-C-K-E-R. I'm with Phelps Engineering, address 1270 North Winchester, Olahtha, Kansas. We are in agreement with all stipulations. We do kind of have a concern also with the regulation of the revised stipulation stating that all traffic going to state line. Majority of it is probably going to go to Sundance, but there's going to be routes where we may be taking fill from homes from southern Overland Park, maybe over off of 175th, 179th, 167th Street coming in also. Like I said, we can use state line. We're a little bit concerned about the condition of state line, which is why originally we had thought Mission Road would be good use since it is arterial, it's designed for that. The other concern we have is the actual regulation. So one, we're going to probably use two different excavators that are going to be doing most of this work, and one of them is Weir's Construction, which their home office happens to be at 207th and Metcalf, so a mile and a half, you know, southwest of the property, which forces them to go that direction, which is opposite of state line. Currently, I'm working on projects on subdivisions to the north, and within a mile, within two miles north, there's, we've got 1,947 lots approved between Southern Meadows, which is located on 191st Street, and 700 lots up on 183rd Street and state line, and then also at 183rd and state line is 47 lots that are approved that are currently under construction. Those trucks are not regulated at all. Weir's is one of the primary contractors, so they may have 15 trucks operating. Only four of them are designated to this operation. So you may have the same contractor with their name on it perceived as if it's fill or borrow material coming out of this site, when it's actually coming from Sundance, or it could be coming from anywhere in Overland Park. You know, there's kind of limited access on what goes to the west. You could take 199th Street straight across. Otherwise, you know, if we take state line, you're probably taking, you're going up to 191st so you can get across, or you can go up to 183rd where you can get across railroad tracks. Otherwise, you're going all the way up Mission to, you know, 159th Street, which makes no sense. That's not a good trout or a truck route. So that's a concern that we have. We are in total agreement. We don't want to delay the approval process for this, as we've got need for the material right now, which she'd kind of stated, you know, like it's Sundance, Sundance is an extremely rocky site. In order to put Johnson County wastewater sewers in, they require suitable backfill for their trench, which cannot have much rock in it. And we've been working with them, but anything that's inside the rideaway, which is the majority of our sanitary sewers, has to have that suitable material. If we don't bring it all in, suitable material, we end up using all the suitable material we have on site, and always all we're left with is rocky material to build the road, the roads. So that's what's driving this whole thing, and trying to, you know, use this piece of property for the best use we can on a piece of ground that is never developable. And as far as the noise and the kind of scope of the work, so you understand, so each trench is a little bit smaller than an acre in size, and we said we would go up to possibly two disturbed at a time, and really that's just a transition from one trench to the other. So the majority of the time, we're talking an acre and a half or less. So if you're talking two acres, the adjacent neighbors, all their lots are larger than two acres to kind of give you a scope of how small this is in the middle of a 160-acre residential piece. So I hope that answers kind of some of the questions you had, and otherwise, I'll stand to take any questions.
Clarification, you indicated that you accept the stipulations that have been advanced by the zoning board. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Even though you have some issues, but you're willing to comply with those, rather than sending it back for additional review?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Other questions? Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I'm curious why the redirection of having them redirect their trucks. Do you know, Commissioner O'Hara?
The, I'm making an assumption, but just from previous conversations with folks out there, they don't want that additional truck traffic on 199th Street. And actually going to Sundance, it makes sense to go over to state line if state line was, you should go drive it. I mean, it's, I was raised on a gravel road, and I'm great at dodging potholes, but these aren't potholes. I mean, it's craters. It's, I'm just, I'm shocked that the trucks can actually get up through there. It's a mess. It's really a mess, but it's out of our jurisdiction.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone present? Excuse me, Ms. Hanslick?
Thank you. Yes, a question perhaps from Ms. Cricks. So the, what, if I'm understanding this correctly, the zoning board is recommending that the trucks go from the site east on 199th and then north on State Line Road. Is that, is that what I'm understanding? Rather than going the small piece on 199th and north on Mission Road?
That's correct.
Okay. So basically, the applicant's being asked to use a potentially dangerous road for truck traffic. Is that also what I'm understanding? I mean, if they hit one of those big holes and truck turns over, is that, how likely is that to happen?
I don't know that that's that likely. So this operation had started without a permit, unknowing of the property owner, so we're trying to catch up and get it all permitted correctly, and have been working with the county. So when it was under, under operation for the two weeks, two or three weeks, or whatever it was, they were doing a loop. So they were coming out and going like empty loads, going up to state line, or going up to Sundance, using Mission, and then coming back on state line. So they've been using state line already. It's just been a loop that they're doing. So we can go state line. It is rough. It's not asphalt. It's a gravel road, and I think they've done some chip seal, so it feels at times like it's asphalt, but it's not holding up real well. And I think due to the intermodal and stuff, there's been an increase of truck traffic on 199th Street, and that's what the neighbors are concerned with. I don't know that this is going to make much, this operation's going to make much difference from that, but it's not worth fighting for us for a two-month delay. You know, we can send them to state line and go up, and they're probably going to come across, either they're going to go, continue up state line to Sundance, and if they're going to another location, they're probably coming across 191st Street and then dispersing to whichever direction they need to go.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. My main concern is the safety of the trucks on, being on what sounds like a bad road on state line.
It's suitable. I mean, Mission Road is a nicer, safer, well-paid road.
Okay, Ms. O'Hara?
It's an issue of breaking axles.
Pardon?
I said it's an issue of breaking axles.
Yeah, okay. All right, if there's no further questions of the applicant, is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item? If not, it's back before the commission, and a motion would be in order. Ms. O'Hara?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 094-22, which approves a conditional use permit for the earth excavation and filling operation for the three-year term at 2600 199th Street for the reasons and subject to the stipulations set forth within the resolution.
Allenbrand, second.
O'Hara made the motion. Allenbrand seconded the motion to approve the resolution and the application as recommended. Is there any further questions or discussion?
Mr. Chair, Peg Trent, Chief Counsel. I just wanted to make the commissioners aware that if it is your desire to remove that additional stipulation, that as to redirecting the traffic to the back road that's poorly graded, that would require you to remand it back to the zoning board, and then it would have to come back to you for consideration again.
The motion includes the recommendation.
I know. I'm just making you aware, because I think it was, there was some discussion on that road.
All right, any further discussion? If not, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Ilert, aye. I have seven votes in favor. A motion carried. Next item.
Item number four. Resolution Number 095-22. Application Number SW 22-253-CUPGA. Consider request from Tony and Kathleen Black, applicant and landowners, for a conditional use permit with a term of 20 years to allow a total of four accessory structures on the property on 8.7 acres zoned RUR Rural District located at 26125 West 207th Street.
Ms. Wicklin.
Diane Wicklin, Planning Department. The subject property is located on the south side of 207th Street, just east of Cedar Niles Road, shown here on the vicinity map. This request is for a conditional use permit to allow a total of four accessory structures on the property, of which exceeds the number of accessory structures allowed by right. The regulations limit the number of accessory structures on lots less than 10 acres in size to a maximum of three. However, more than three accessory structures on a property may be allowed if a conditional use permit is approved. Here's a picture of the close-up view of the subject property, and you can see the existing, three existing accessory structures there on site, and then the barn to the south will be replaced after damage done in a windstorm. Here's an aerial view of the surrounding area, and the red star indicates the location of the accessory structures. Here's a picture of two of the four accessory structures that would be allowed by the permit. Just a picture of the existing machine shed and the chicken shed. Here's a picture of the horse barn, which would be the third accessory structure. And then this would be the fourth accessory structure allowed by the CUP. So this is just a picture of the proposed new barn that's going to replace that barn that was demolished in the windstorm, and it would be rebuilt in the same location. Also to note that there were no members of the public that spoke at the zoning board meeting on this application. Planning staff recommends approval, and the zoning board also recommended approval of the conditional use permit with stipulations, including a 20-year term. With that, I'm available for questions, and the applicant, Tony Black, is also present.
Questions of the staff? All right, does the applicant have any comments to make?
Tony Black.
All right, so noted, there were no comments from the applicant. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item? All right, if not, it's back before the commission. A motion is in order. Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a motion. I move to adopt Resolution Number 095-22, which approves a conditional use permit and the term of 20 years to allow a total of four accessory structures on the property for the reasons and subject to speculations set forth within the resolution.
Ms. Allenbrand made the motion to approve the application on the conditional use permit. Do I hear a second?
Myers, second.
Myers seconded that motion. Is there any further questions or discussion? If not, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Ilert, aye. I have seven votes in favor. Motion carried. Next item.
Resolution Number 096-22. Application Number SW 22-255-FDPA. Consider request from Brian Weber, Nexus 5 Group, on behalf of Jeffrey Alton Dorf, Plane Hanger LLC, applicant, and Johnson County Airport Commission, landowner, requesting a final development plan for construction of an airplane hangar on 1.5 acres on property zoned PEC-3 Planned Research Development and Light Industrial Park District located at 570 Highland Drive, New Century Air Center.
Mr. Pendley.
Good morning. Commissioners Sean Pendley, County Planning Staff. This application is a request for a final development plan for a new airplane hangar at New Century Air Center. The subject property is located at 570 Highland Drive, New Century Air Center, identified here by the site in blue. The site is, the subject property is located on the west side of the airfield with access to Highland Drive. As indicated here on the aerial map, the site identified... As indicated here on the aerial map, the site identified in red. This leased area is located just south of two existing hangars at the air center. The site is currently vacant, and as indicated, there are other hangars on the, the west side of the air center, west side of the airfield, excuse me. The, this is a copy of the proposed site plan. The, the site area is one-point-two acres, and the proposed hangar is a total of fourteen-thousand four-hundred-and-sixty-three square feet, which includes an office area of approximately twenty-four-hundred square feet. The development plan includes a new access drive off of Highland Drive and a parking lot with a total of ten parking spaces. In addition, there is a new taxiway to the airfield. This, the site does, design is similar to other hangars in the air center and does meet all requirements in terms of setbacks, size, and design. The, this is a copy of the floor plan for the hangar, basically designed for one aircraft and the office area. The proposed building elevations and, and the design are consistent with other hangars at the air center. It consists of pre-finished metal wall panels and a standing seam metal roof and one bi-folding hangar door. The applicant also submitted a final stormwater management and quality management plans. They've been submitted and accepted by the Public Works Department. There, there will be a requirement for an entrance permit, land disturbance permit, and stormwater treatment facility prior to the issuance of the building permit. Staff does recommend approval of the final development plan, subject to the stipulations in the resolution. The Southwest Consolidated Zoning Board held a hearing on this item at the October twenty-sixth meeting. The zoning board recommended approval with all stipulations as recommended by staff. The applicant is Brian Weber with the Nexus Group, and he is available on Zoom. Happy to answer any questions for staff.
Does the airport commission, did they approve this also? Or did they provide input?
The airport commission did not review the development plans, but they did review the lease. The lease exhibit, I believe, was presented and approved by the airport commission, and then the zoning board recommended approval of the final development.
But this is consistent with other hangar operations?
That, that is correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Other questions? Ms. Hanslick?
Thank you, Mr. Pendley. Just a question. I'm assuming this is for commercial use, not for personal use.
I believe that is correct. It's for commercial use. The applicant can explain the details of the operation, but that will be correct for commercial use and for, and they will include office area in this site as well. But of course, then on leased ground for the air center.
Thank you.
Ms. Allen Brand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this, this met a hundred percent approval. I'm a liaison on the airport commission, and so it meets all the guidelines. And so when you're ready, Mr. Chair, I do have a motion.
Okay. Other questions? Is the applicant present? Any comments they'd like to make?
We have them on Zoom.
All right.
Can we open up Brian Weber and Philip Henning? Brian Weber, you're available to speak.
I'm present, but I don't.
Is there any comments the applicant would like to make? Go ahead and head. All right. Okay. It's back before the commission. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item? A motion would be in order. Ms. Allen Brand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to adopt resolution zero nine six dash two-two, which approves a final development plan for airplane hangar located at five-seventy Highland Drive for the reasons and subject to stipulations set forth in the resolution.
Do I hear a second?
Hanslick, second.
Allen Brand made the motion. Hanslick second of the motion to approve the request of the application in regards to the hangar at New Century Airport. Any further questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have seven votes in favor. Motion carried. Item number six, I believe.
Sitting as the governing body of Fire District Number Two, accept the audited financial statements year ended December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one.
Mr. Francis.
Good morning. Jim Francis, Fire Services Administrator. Today, you're sitting as the Fire Board to be presented the audited financial statements from twelve-thirty-one of two thousand twenty-one. I have today Chester Moyer, CPA, with Ruben Brown, and Becky Jones from FMA is here. So I will turn over the floor to Chester to give the presentation.
Okay. Mr. Moyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Chester Moyer. I'm an audit partner with the external audit firm for Ruben Brown, of Ruben Brown. And today, I'll be covering primarily the Fire District Number Two audit results. Before I do that, if I may, I'd like to also give you an update on the federal funds audit of the county. If that's okay, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Thank you. The, the federal funds audit of the county was not complete at the time of the issuance of the audit of the county. Its deadline was September the thirtieth, and that was timely filed. We audited five major programs, five federal funds of major programs for the county. One of those major programs was the Coronavirus Relief Funds. That audit was timely submitted and filed, and there were no findings of compliance, no findings of internal control, and we issued a clean opinion on the federal funds audit.
Thank you. All right. Let's proceed with the application, or the, the item before us.
Thank you. For Fire District Number Two, I do want to remind you that information is included within the county's financial statements. It's part of a larger opinion unit in the county's financial statements, so when it gets pulled out separately, our audit thresholds drop proportionally because it's no longer part of a larger opinion unit. So our, our audit reflects that. We issued the following documents as a result of that audit report. We have a clean opinion on the financial statements. We also issued a report on internal controls that had no comments reportable to you. And then we also issued an auditor communications letter. One item that I'd like to highlight from that letter is that we are required to communicate to you any adjusting journal entries that came out as a, as a result of our audit procedures. We did have one adjusting journal entry that related to increasing the compensated absences accrual by about fifty-four thousand dollars. If you'll recall, during two thousand twenty-one, the employees of Fire District Number Two moved to Fire District Number One and to the city of Overland Park, and there's some rate differentials between those three entities. The schedule to calculate that needed to be updated, and that change has been made, and the records have been updated for that. So I want to point out also that our audit had no disagreements with management. They were cooperative during the course of the audit, took great care during the audit, and I'd be happy to take any questions anyone has about the audit.
Questions of Mr. Moyer? Ms. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'll direct this to Mr. Moyer, but I, I'm not a hundred percent sure it's within his bailiwick. As you're aware, the relationship between Fire District Two and the county has evolved in the last few years. I was wondering, will they continue indefinitely to be a separate reporting unit? Or is there a point at which it is no longer organizationally necessary to report them separately and fold them into other operations?
I'm assuming that there would have to be a dissolution of the Fire District Number Two. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, there would be, there would be a legal, some sort of a legal change from what currently exists to make that happen.
Right.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Ms. O'Hara?
I do have one question. On page sixty, the fund balance at the end of the year on, it says, original is one-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-and-eighty-nine. Final was one-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-eighty-nine, and then the actual is three-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-four. I was just curious. Is this because there's a difference in the, in the, in the fund balance at the beginning of the year? I see that there's a three-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-dollar. So that means that our, the fund balance increased three-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty dollars and?
So on page sixty is a budget-to-actual schedule for the debt service fund specifically. The net change in fund balance increased by twelve thousand dollars. What the beginning balance of, of three-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand reflects the beginning balance of actual, and that, then increasing by another twelve thousand to the, to the three-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Allen Brand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I really appreciate having the outside audit, and then I also appreciate Mrs. Jones' staff looking over it as well. And as the commissioner setting up here, it makes me feel pretty, pretty good knowing that, not pretty good, really good, knowing the staff and everyone involved in this process. I mean, you know, having a clean, a clean bill is, I think that's extraordinary. So thank you. Thank you both, and to your staff.
Okay. Other questions of Mr. Moyer? All right. If not, is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item? Hearing none, is back for the commission, and a motion would be in order. Ms. Allen Brand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sitting as the governing body of Fire District Number Two, I move to approve accepting Fire District Number Two audit financial statements for the year ended December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one.
Hanslick, second.
Allen Brand made the motion. Hanslick second of the motion to approve the acceptance of the Fire District Number Two audit as presented. Any further questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have seven votes in favor. Motion carried. Thank you. Next item.
Item number seven, consider approving an agreement with the Mid-America Regional Council, Mark, to update and improve regional stormwater management standards and planning guidelines in an amount not to exceed three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lee Kellenberger with the Johnson County Stormwater Management Program. I'm happy to be here today to you, in front of you today, talking about updates to stormwater management standards. If you may recall, we've had a line item in our budget for the past couple of years to update regional design standards, and the request before you today is to do just that. The existing design standards in use throughout Johnson County and really the entire Kansas City metro area are, are two documents. APWA, the American Public Works Association's Chapter Fifty-six-hundred. And that, that document really dictates how stormwater is collected and conveyed as new development and redevelopment occurs throughout Johnson County. And then the second document is a standalone manual of best management practices for water quality. And that manual's intended to offset or mitigate the negative effects of development on water quality in our streams. And these standards have really served our region well for the past twenty years, and they've really led to greater consistency in, in, in design and development in Johnson County and the region. But there's been substantial changes, if you may guess, over the past twenty years in the data that we have, the, the computation methods that we have, and the modeling practices. So there's been some momentum building around this effort for the past five years or so, and that kind of culminated with a regional task force that was formed. And Johnson County participated in that, along with a lot of other community stakeholders and the engineering community. And we really came out with some key recommendations that we would like to accomplish with this update, and those include combining the water quality and quantity standards into one comprehensive document so that they're looked at in concert, updating our rainfall and other hydrology design standards, and increasing, removing some of the subjectivity around some of the computation methods, and, and for example, when, when detention is and isn't required. So, and coincidentally, a lot of these goals align with where we're heading with our program and our strategic plan. Those include advancing, you know, our community's vitality and resiliency and sustainability, managing stormwater at the watershed scale, and providing a platform, you know, for innovation in stormwater management. So this is going to be a significant effort, and it will require a lot of technical and financial resources. To date, twenty-two communities, including Johnson County, have pledged to support and contribute both financially and technically to this effort. It's estimated that the effort will, you know, cost around seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And in our discussions with the Stormwater Management Advisory Council, they unanimously recommended that we fully support this effort. Our contribution of three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars will ensure that all the Johnson County cities have a seat at the table and can participate in this process to make sure that, you know, we're fully represented throughout the duration of the project. Mid-America Regional Council has agreed to facilitate and administer the process. That includes issuing an RFP, selecting a team of, you know, qualified subject matter experts, you know, helping us with stakeholder input, community participation from, from developers, and as well as, you know, managing the contract and through to the end and, and for adoption, final adoption by APWA. So in addition, we're anticipating kind of a two-tiered approach. The majority of these funds are going to the third-party consultant that will be doing this. And to oversee that process, we'll have a two-tiered system where we have a technical advisory committee comprised of the communities that are participating to oversee any recommendations and work products that come out of the, out of the process, as well as an overarching kind of executive leadership team that will be checking in on our, us throughout the duration of the project, and that will be at the city or county manager level as well to kind of give that unique perspective to this overall process and making sure that we're doing this in light of other regional and, and other activities going on throughout our region. So with that, I will stop and see if you guys have any questions for me.
Lee, the funds for this commitment will, will come from the current stormwater management fee. Is that correct?
Correct. That's coming from our, it was in our two thousand twenty-two budget that you.
All right. Thank you. Other questions? Ms. O'Hara?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are all cities in Johnson County participating in this stormwater management program?
The only city that technically is not as part of our program right now is Edgerton. They have not joined the Watershed Organization for. So the door is open. We've had discussions with them. They were, at the time we, we adopted the Watershed Orgs, they did not join at that time.
And that area where they are developing the warehouse is south of I-35. That wasn't a, that was, that wasn't a conservation area for Hillsdale Lake. Is that correct?
I, I'm not going to speak specifically to a conservation area. I know there's been a watershed restoration protection area down there that, and KDHE has been involved in, in various projects and programs throughout the year to protect Hillsdale Lake. And those conversations have just restarted, and we have, are in ongoing discussions with the state and the cities down there to see if additional measures need to be put in place to protect Hillsdale Lake.
And cities can, cities can opt out of this, correct? And they can set their own stormwater.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah. Obviously, you know, cities can adopt grant variances and waivers, you know, just like this board does as well, but that, there's unique, you know, situations that arise with a particular development. But I would say, on the whole, the standards are applied as intended for the majority of our cities and our majority of our developments.
And, and one, one development that I'm aware of at one-hundred-and-third in Antioch, the Brookridge, I know that they, that that was not required to do any water retention, and that is obviously going to, to increase the water flow to the east. And we have areas like at one-hundred-and-third in Lamar that's very flood-prone, and then on down to one-hundred-and-third in State Line. So it's just that, that, what, what my concern is, is that we're going to be, number one, we have standards in place. Cities do have the flexibility to opt out, or that they can, that they do not have to adhere to these standards. And then number three, you just were telling me this morning about Olatha had come up with a very unique idea in handling stormwater runoff on one-hundred-and-sixty-seventh Street between Brom and Lindenwood and Olatha. And I'm just concerned that we're going to be throwing this three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars out, and it's really not going to accomplish what we really want, want, want to, and that is to decrease the problems with flooding due to development.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Fast? Did you have a comment?
Yes. I mean, some, I mean, regional stormwater planning, you know, as, as you know, one of the key issues is because water has no boundaries, bringing people to the table. So how do you ensure, like, all four counties, the standards are similar? You know, we have this regional plan, which is great, but then to ensure that, you know, that the four counties come together, how will that work?
So that's exactly why we're doing this, is a regional approach, and that we're not going off on our own in Johnson County, doing our own design criteria versus wind. So, that's exactly why we're doing this, is it a regional approach, and that we're not going off on our own in Johnson County, doing our own design criteria versus Wyandotte, or Platte, or Clay. So, the engineering community in Kansas City, Missouri is a very tight-knit community. A lot of the community staff, at the staff level, we understand the need for these updates. So, that's, that is the regional approach that we've taken here. So, to ensure that there is consistency, so that when you're developing in, in Johnson County, it's very similar to how you're developing in Kansas City, Missouri, or in Wyandotte County, or Miami County.
But each county might not adopt this, correct?
So, it, no, there, there's no guarantee that each county will adopt this.
Ms. Allenbrand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I think that this is, is key, and I think sitting around the table together as part of a think tank to try to come up with the best solution, and people do have, you know, they, they have their money that's, you know, that's, that's, that's on the table as well. So, I would think that they would be interested in hearing other solutions, and I know that when we talked also, the, the cost-sharing savings of everybody working together is another key. You know, if you look at, you know, we go out on our own and try to price this out, it's going to be a lot more expensive. So, I think that this is a great program, and teaming up with others together and to sit around the table is, is important.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hanslick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I'm, I'm familiar with how challenging it is for many businesses when there are all kinds of different regulations all over the metro area. And I think this effort to have some consistency in our stormwater standards makes a lot of sense. It, it's an economic development effort. It will provide an opportunity for communication across the various boundaries, and I'm very supportive of it, and I appreciate the time you took with me the other day to, to review it, and I'm supportive of, of moving ahead with it.
Ms. O'Hara?
Aren't the engineering firms already using the best practices at this point? I mean, they're probably ahead of us on the curve on this in that they, they are constantly working with, on the ground, and they see that, they see the issues, and they're going to be using the, the best practices, recommendations to their developers. Is that correct?
So, what's best to a developer may, may be different than what's best to the community at large. Yeah, could they? Are they using technology to design subdivisions or developments? Sure. But what level to the, what level of service are they achieving? Are they doing the bare minimum? Or they go above and beyond? You know, that's the questions that we want to collectively, as a group, sit down and decide for communities. So, can they do it? Yes. Is it being done? I don't know.
You know, my, my recollection is that stormwater drainage ordinances by cities have been adjusted over time because of the necessity of the, of development that occurs upstream. And so, I think it's certainly appropriate, and this action should move forward so that counties in the metro area have the same, same information and detail that would impact their decisions going forward. So, I think this is a, an excellent opportunity to participate in that, in that type of work. Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, it's a very informative discussion. It kind of reflects the fact that we have how many political jurisdictions that have their fingers in the dyke on stormwater and, and how you manage that, not just in Johnson County, but region-wide, and, and it is a challenge. But I wanted to follow on to Commissioner O'Hara's question, because I think it's valid. But I was wondering, as I recall, Mr. Kellenbrand, the last time we did this was about 20 years ago, and we developed standards. And there's always the issue of compliance and adoption and modification and just willfully ignoring it sometimes. But I'm just wondering, how have we progressed on that previous plan? Have you seen a willingness by communities, either counties or cities or whatever, to embrace that? Or have you seen that being problematic over the last 20 years?
Yeah, the, the last time the 5600, Chapter 5600 was substantially updated was 2003. So, it's about, about 20 years. Again, just by the adoption, by the number of communities that have adopted that and are using that as their standard, as their base standard, I'd say it's been a high, high degree of success. And, but there are nuances with it about, you know, there's some subjectivity to it. There are areas that we could definitely be improved upon when it comes to the hydrology and hydraulic calculations that we do.
But allowing communities to have some level of flexibility is not necessarily wrong, is it?
No, not the degree, the fact that they do have tweaks to their, maybe they have, you know, certain reasons why they would want to do some flexibility in their regulation.
Well, my other question, Mr. Kellenberger, is $750,000 is, it gives me pause. I mean, that's, it sounds like a substantial amount of money, and our contribution is over half of that. How, how did we arrive at $750,000, and how did we arrive at our contribution compared to the region at large?
Yeah. Okay. Seven, so 350 is a little less than half of 750.
No, sorry, yes.
Yeah. So, we are currently, based on the latest pledges from the communities, we're, we're currently apps at about 40, 40 to 45% of the overall contribution. We looked back at where we, the previous effort to update the manual, that was in 2001 that contract was entered into. It was a $500,000 effort that time to update one, one manual. So, 20 years later, we're updating two manuals. 750 is kind of the number that we collectively, as a group, came up with as might be a, a good target level to reach. Now, if we can do it for much less, we obviously will.
And the 350, what, how, how did?
Oh, the 350? So, APWA, MARC, and, and the community members sat down and, and we developed a, a recommended contribution level, kind of a, a table, a matrix saying, based on city population. And the, the, we in Johnson County are the largest contribution as a, based on population is where we sat.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any, any other questions? Ms. O'Hara?
So, you're saying that Johnson County is 45% of the population of the metropolitan area?
No. I don't know all the populations, but again, it's not mandatory. All the communities aren't participating. That could participate. We are just the ones that have, the ones that have come forward.
So, it's deep pockets?
I think it's a desire to do, to elevate the design, you know, to the, to improve the stormwater management standards in Johnson County.
One, one follow-on. And this, this, this will be recommendations, again, because we have no jurisdiction to make these requirements. This, this is going to be a, a region-wide recommendation, and within the region, there are many differences. So, I mean, we can't tailor-make this to any specific part of the, of, of the county or of the, of the metropolitan area. So, it's going to necessarily be a little broad, and, and then cities are going to have the option to exempt out if they, I mean, even if they, even if they, even if they adopt these regulations or recommendations and put them into their regulations, then individual projects still have the flexibility of being exempted out. Is that correct?
Mr. Kellenberger, let me ask you this. As I recall, the Stormwater Management Committee, which I assume has reviewed this, is comprised of representatives of our cities. So, they are aware of this, and they also have representatives on the Mid-America Regional Council Stormwater Management Group. So, they are fully represented in all these items and discussions. Is that right?
Absolutely, yes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Chairman, and that's, that's kind of the comments where I was heading was, I really believe this is going to create and cause more stability throughout the region, which is important. It gets everybody involved in discussion instead of people going their own ways. Even though there's some flexibility there, it still involves a lot of talk and, and, and a lot of reasoning of why things should be done a certain way. And I think this moves towards that, and, and that's important.
Okay. Other comments? Ms. Hanslick?
Yes, thank you. When we spoke the other day, Mr. Kellenberger, you mentioned something about the amount of stormwater that comes from Johnson County and actually goes over to Missouri. Can you talk about that? Are we, we, in terms of the cost, are we, are we responsible for a lot of the, the stormwater that goes over into Missouri?
Yeah, there is an element to this of being a good upstream neighbor. We have the fortunate geography in Johnson County that we don't receive run-on from any other jurisdictions. We, about a third of our county drains to the east via the Blue River, and Kansas City, Missouri is the recipient of that, of our stormwater. To the south, a third of our county drains to the Hillsdale Watershed, and they are the recipient of our runoff. And then to the north, Wyandotte County receives some, and the rest goes directly to the Kansas River. So, in terms of origination of stormwater problems, you know, we kind of are the epicenter on the Kansas side, I guess.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Other questions?
I'll do a motion when we're ready.
Go ahead. All right. Ms. O'Hara, did you have another question?
Yes. Has the construction industry and the development industry, have they been, have they, are they part of the people that are, that you've been speaking to and to gather their, their input on this?
Yeah, developer engineers were definitely involved in the, in the Sustainable Task Force that was developed to tell, develop some of these key recommendations. And then, when the process is initiated, we'll have focus groups with the development community, others to participate and get their feedback of what, what's working for them, what's not working for them as well throughout the process.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item? Yes. Morning, Jeff.
Good morning. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Jeff Harkness, 9407 Blue Jacket. What I was wondering, has there been any talk about a cost-sharing program to turn the Mission Hills Country Club into a stormwater detention area? Build it similar to Meadowbrook, the way they did that, and get some commercial property around that area?
Well, Lee, can you speak to that? I mean, there is, there is a cost-sharing of all the stormwater management systems that are put in place in Johnson County. Go ahead.
Yeah. I don't know of a specific project in Mission Hills Country Club, but that was one of the outcomes of our, of our new watershed-based approach, to look at existing infrastructure detention basins, underutilized areas around, around repairing corridors, to enhance those stormwater features, to do more, to do more water quality or more flood control. So, we have a cost share with all the cities for any project in any, you know, that meets our criteria.
All right. Any other comments? All right. The most, the item is back before us. Did you have a motion, Ms.?
Just have, I had, just have an additional question. I know that there are some board members on the Board of County Commissioners that are also on the MARC board. Does, does this create any problems with voting on an issue that, that a portion of the money is going to go to MARC for overhead? I believe it was like $58,000. Is it, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah, about that.
No, it does not. Does not. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Fast?
Yes.
Do you have a motion?
I move to approve an agreement with the Mid-America Regional Council, MARC, to update and approve regional stormwater management standards and planning guidelines in an amount not to exceed $350,000.
Hanslick, second.
Fast made the motion, Hanslick second of the motion to approve the agreement with the Mid-America Regional Council in regards to the stormwater management project and the funding so noted. Any further questions or comments? Ms. O'Hara?
I am, I am concerned about whether this is going to be an efficient and effective expenditure of, of funds, and that our portion is not in line with our population, and so therefore, my, my vote will reflect that.
Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I have similar concerns, but based on the history of this effort and the importance of watershed management regionally, I would, I would like to have seen a, a more definitive, clear understanding of the cost projections on this, because conceptually, I think this is a worthwhile effort, particularly given the many political jurisdictions that you have to try to navigate with the watersheds in Johnson County, but regionally, and how they impact each other. But because of the cost questions that I have, my vote will reflect those concerns.
So noted. Any other comments? All right, if not, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
No.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
No.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have five votes in favor, two opposed, motion carried. Next item?
Item number eight, consider adopting the 2023 Johnson County State Legislative Platform.
Mark.
Morning Commissioners, Mark Dapp with Budget and Financial Planning. I will also note that Stephen Durst, Frederico and Durst.
Can you pull the microphone down a little closer, Mark?
Stephen Durst of Frederico and Durst Consulting is also in attendance today. So, this item is consideration of the annual State Legislative Platform. I will note that the, essentially, this is tend to convey the county's position on certain issues that may come before the legislature and provide direction to staff and the contract lobbyist. This document is not intended to encompass all the issues that may come up in the legislative session. What is before you is the redline copy of the 23 legislative platform that was reviewed during the Committee of the Whole meeting on November 17th. This included three staff recommendations of changes to the platform. First is just removing the reference to compensating use tax and the Wayfair decision, as that has effectively been implemented by the legislature in 2021. On page three, there was recommended language about property caps on specific sorts of property types, which was in response to a proposal made during the interim related to local ad valorem tax revenue and changes in appraisal rates as a result of bringing that program back online. Finally, there was language added about increased corrections funding that was proposed by staff. There was feedback from the commission at that particular meeting related to 988 funding, and that has been added to the State Legislative Platform for sustained and dedicated language. And then finally, there was an addendum that provides some additional detail about the impact of the four action agenda priorities and what changes in those legislative areas would mean specifically for the county. So, the platform is, is before you for consideration today.
Okay. Mark, the Committee of the Whole made a specific recommendation in regards to this legislative platform. Is, is what's before us this morning consistent with that? Were there any additions or deletions following that?
There were. We reflected the direction that was given at the Committee of the Whole meeting. That was the 988 language that was proposed to be added at that meeting. This draft reflects that, and then there was discussion about the additional detail on each of the action agenda priorities, and this draft also reflects that. So, we've incorporated all the feedback from that, that meeting.
All right, thank you. Questions? Ms. Hanslick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Dapp. I have a, I have a question about, under fiscal impact, a letter L opposes caps in property valuations and limitations on valuation methods that shift the property tax burden benefiting one category of property to the detriment of all others as unconstitutional and inequitable. I'm wondering, is that in, is that in conflict with the bill that was signed last year, HB 2239, that expanded current property tax relief programs offered by the state to basically have a base year tax freeze for qualifying claimants? I'm just wondering, is that a conflict with what is in our legislative platform with what's already been done with the tax, the tax freeze, which I, I support for low-income elderly and folks, disabled veterans? the tax freeze, which I support for low-income elderly and folks, disabled veterans? So can you speak to that? Is that a problem?
So, and what we have attempted to do is the Homestead Property Relief Act that was extended last year, or expanded last year, as part of a circuit breaker program, that and also the Safe Seniors Act. Those are particular property tax programs targeted at particular individuals. The language that we are trying to insert with new letter L is property valuation types in a response to proposals that would reduce the amount of the assessed, the appraised value on particular property types as a whole, and that would dramatically affect the ad valorem tax collection. Whereas, particular programs that are targeted as circuit breaker or property tax freezes for particular individuals, we support the expansion of those programs, but keeping the entirety of the appraisal system as it's currently constructed.
Thank you. I appreciate that explanation. I just wanted to make sure.
I was thinking, I was trying to remember, those current policies that are in place speak to refunds by the state rather than specific appraisal situations. Ms. O'Hara?
Yes. I find it interesting that we do not support legislation that would shift the burden of property taxes. However, we refuse to look at and recommend that the legislature study and adopt caps on property tax incentives, because here in Johnson County, we are looking at even 100% tax increment finance districts. And in some communities, we're looking at 90% to 95% tax abatements. And this is going way beyond what traditionally has been happening in Johnson County, and it is eroding our tax base. We have $84 million annually that's being diverted, and we just turned a blind eye and say, well, that's economic development. And so, and we fought very diligently and successfully against the dark store theory, but honestly, the dark store theory is just another process of tax abatements, is in the eyes of the people that own those properties. And they're going to argue, well, we have economic development potential too. It's that we have really given up on the idea of capitalism, and that we have the idea that only something that is subsidized by the government is going to be successful, which is ridiculous in this county. It's absolutely ridiculous. But we're going to just turn a blind eye to it. So those are my comments.
Okay. Well, I think as we look at economic development policies, if we do not also view the economic benefits, whether short-term or long-term, we are not having the exact information that makes the best decision. Other questions about the item before us?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I will rigorously argue that point, and I will give the case study of Overland Park. In the early 2000s, Overland Park's mill levy was 7.6 mils. It is now 14.7 mils, and it is an absolute classic case study of how economic development incentives do not work. If they worked, our property taxes would be going down. And that increase in the mill levy is also coupled with extreme increases of valuations. It is a false narrative. And because the, I mean, I'm from the development and construction industry. I understand, but it's just gotten out of control, and a 50% cap is not an unreasonable, this is not unreasonable. It is unreasonable to be giving 90%, 95%, and 100% tax incentives, because when you give a tax incentive, as our Director of our Appraisal Department, Beau Boye, he specifically said in public that when you give a tax incentive, that then it is going to increase his taxes to the rest of the tax base. And that has been proven to be true for the last 20 years.
I'll stick about my comment. Thank you very much. Ms. Allenbrand?
Mr. Chair, I have a motion when you're ready.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak on this item? If not, a motion is in order. Ms. Allenbrand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to adopt the 2023 Johnson County State Legislative Platform.
Hanslick, second.
Allenbrand made the motion. Hanslick seconded the motion to adopt the legislative platform as presented. Any further comments? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, every year, we have a vigorous debate on the state legislative platform. Last year, there were some criticisms about the need to have more substantive review because we hadn't had one. I wanted to thank staff for at least having one session to talk about a few of the items and some of the discussion. I think it's a step in the right direction. A concern I've had over the years is that it's been presented almost as a laundry list, too much to consume, and staff has tried to hone that down to three or four categories for presentation to the legislature, and then background information for the consultants and staff to use in follow-up discussion. And I appreciate those efforts. Having said that, though, Mr. Chairman, I still have reservations about the philosophy behind some of the requests. Individually, there are many items here that I think make sense for Johnson County and the community and the state, but it does not address the relationship between the state and Johnson County as I think it should. It also doesn't address our kind of two-sided discussion of wanting more money, but then fussing about the unfunded mandates that the state puts upon us. And I think that confuses the conversations. And I also have to agree, at least in part, with Commissioner O'Hara. The whole tax management issue is problematic, and we've had discussions in past years about sales tax exemptions, not just for public entities, but generally, who and how those tax breaks are allotted. And so, for those reasons, Mr. Chairman, my vote will reflect that concern.
Other comments? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
No.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
No.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have five votes in favor, two opposed. Motion carried. Mark, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. If I could add one additional comment, we do have our legislative reception this afternoon between 4:00 and 5:30 p.m. for the entire Johnson County delegation, so I just wanted to provide a reminder to the Commission for that.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other items on our agenda?
No, sir.
All right, we'll turn to management reports. Ms. Postock-Ferguson?
Chairman and Commissioners, I have several items for you this morning. The first one is a SIRI report. It's the November edition, but most of the data is through September of 2022. The first one is unemployment rate in September was 2.1% compared to 2.3% the previous year. Year-to-date, single-family home sales through September has decreased by 10.5%. Single-family building permits, year-to-date through September, had a 22% decrease. Total retail sales for Johnson County year-to-date through August, this is one that's a different month, through August this year, had a decrease of, I'm sorry, increase of 11%. And with that, I'll see if there's questions. The full report is attached in your manager's memo, and I have other items.
Questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just kind of a general question. Unemployment has been exceedingly low in Johnson County for quite some time, and it continues to be, but I was just wondering, what's the trend nationally? Is unemployment softening, or how would you say?
Nationally, unemployment rate is also low.
Yeah. So, well, and that's why, if it had been shifting because of the inflation and recession concerns.
One factor that's always present on a national basis is people dropping off the employment rolls.
Yeah.
And as a result of the pandemic, and I think other issues, that's a factor. It may not be the entire answer, but it's a factor.
No, I was just wondering, because one of the questions, and I'm not asking this to enliven debate, but with Panasonic coming in, that's a big employment expectation. And I'm just wondering, if the plants, I mean, if there's nobody locally, they're planning to bring people in nationally?
I think that's a regional project.
Is it?
I mean, you can look at four or five counties that abut Johnson County on the west, and I'm sure there will be employees coming in from those counties.
Yeah, I would think, yeah.
Ms. Allenbrand?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to share with the Commissioners. I was in a roundtable discussion with several business leaders, and Johnson County workforce was there as well, and they're saying there's, right now, there's two jobs to every Johnson County resident. But the big movement is helping get people educated, helping them, you know, get their GEDs, helping them, you know, get the education they need to get into those positions. And that is something that's been very successful in construction, in companies as well. So just to share with you that that's going on, and there's a lot of emphasis being put on that. And then also, you know, just transportation to and from, you know, work, so.
All right. Other questions? Ms. O'Hara?
Thank you. I will just share with Commissioner Ashcraft that nationally, the jobless claims did go down this last month. And from a small business owner's perspective, I will tell you that it is very, very, very difficult for small businesses to find, well, for all businesses, but it impacts small businesses, I believe, even more, is that it's just very, very difficult to find employees. And this will continue to be an issue. And on most economic development incentive packages, they talk about job creation. Again, we can't even fill the jobs that we already have, and yet, we are throwing hundreds of millions of dollars to these companies, and we can't even fill the positions that we have now. But those are my comments.
Thank you.
Chairman, staff shared with me some information that nationally, unemployment rate is 3.7% per Bureau of Labor Statistics, which is similar to pre-pandemic. I don't know about the trend, but that's just the current.
Thank you. Continue, please.
Yes. The next item is the major projects update. A lot of information in there. I'll highlight two things from that. The Antioch Library replacement, many of you were at the groundbreaking that occurred this week. Revenue bonds will be issued in the second quarter of next year, with substantial completion anticipated for November, late November of '23. And another item to highlight is a Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan update that is underway. They plan to have substantial completion of that project end of the first quarter of 2023, and plan to present it at our annual joint, JCPRD and Bocc meeting before the budget. So unless there's questions on that item, I'll go to the next one. Looks like there's a question.
All right. Ms. O'Hara?
I know that we have discussed this before at the board level. The libraries plan to demolish the library at 151st and just west of Antioch, and build a new $55 million library. And I just, again, am very, very, very concerned about that expenditure. This is within my district, and the folks that I have discussed this with, there is no need for this. And as much debt as we are piling on this county, especially with the increases of the wastewater district projects, I hope that we can send a message loud and clear to the library board to cease and desist on this idea for the $55 million library project on 151st and Antioch.
All right, thank you. Again, our discussion previously had identified this as a potential capital project in the future, and so I don't think we have a specific recommendation in that regard, so.
Chairman, I believe that that's in the 2023 CIP for the library board.
Yeah, okay. Well, it'll be presented, and there'll be a decision made at that time. All right, continue, please.
Okay. The next item is a Sunflower Quarry inspection update. A conditional use permit, or CUP, was approved by the board in 2020 for Sunflower Quarry. The CUP included a stipulation for planning staff to inspect the property annually during the term of the CUP and prepare a report to the board. Planning staff conducted an inspection of the Sunflower Quarry on October 21st. A summary memo of the inspection is attached, and favorable, there were favorable findings from the inspection. And Sean Penley is here if you have further questions.
Okay, thank you. Ms. O'Hara, Ms. Allenbrand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Penley?
I appreciate your staff and that you stay on top of this, because this is one of the areas that we receive complaints about, of the dust and the noise level. And I appreciate that you are out there doing those. It seems like probably about every other week, there is a question, and I appreciate that, because a lot of those concerns have been addressed, and limiting the times, the trucks are going in and out. I just wanted to let you know. I will distribute this to people that live around that area, just to alert them. So thank you for doing it.
Absolutely, thank you. And I'll just note, too, that planning and co-staff inspect that, as well as Department of Health and Environment, too. There's an air quality manager that does a regular inspection. They do regulatory inspections. So certainly, we do, we realize the importance of that CUP and the.
And I really appreciate them having the open house and inviting the public to come in, so that people live around, you know, the area can go in. So I thought that was a very nice gesture, which they've done for some time, so thank you.
Very good. Ms. O'Hara?
Yes, I just have a quick question. Is this quarry still in the county, or is this the area that DeSoto annexed?
Yes, the quarry is still in the unincorporated area. It was at one time in the city of DeSoto, but it was de-annexed. But since Martin Marietta has been in operation on the quarry, it has remained in the county.
Okay, so I have a question about a quarry that's in my district, that we have an issue with sulfur dioxide. And it's really an issue, and it is in Overland Park, but I believe through our Health and Environment that we still have jurisdiction over it. Is that correct? Or is that KDHE, or?
Yeah, I may want to defer to that. I think Mr. Leipzig may have additional information.
This is a huge, huge issue.
Commissioner, this is Joe Connor, Assistant County Manager. And I think, you asked me to look into that. I think I provided you with the latest update from our Department of Health and Environment on what's happening there. Glad to visit with you about that.
Well, I think that the rest of the board needs to understand that this is, I mean, this is, I thought it was just naturally occurring sulfur, and then I found out that actually, it's from the, and Mr. Connors gave me this information. It's actually the drywall that is being dumped in this landfill, because it just takes construction-type debris is what it takes, not the, it's not a normal landfill like Deppenbaus, but that the chemical reaction in the decomposition of the drywall is what is creating the sulfur dioxide. And so, I mean, it's a smelly situation. Like, I was raised on a farm, and we had a sulfur well, and I understand, I just thought it was happening naturally. But no, this is from the dump, and it is definitely impacting the quality of life for the folks who live around it.
And I'll be glad to share that information with the rest of the Commissioners as well about that landfill. So, yeah, just, this is landfill, not a quarry, so it's different.
Thank you very much. All right.
Okay. Final item is a notice of public hearing. The city of Alatha notified the board that they will be conducting a public hearing Tuesday, December 6th, at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of the public hearing is to consider the issuance of $30 million in industrial revenue bonds and a 10-year 50% property tax abatement. The project is to construct industrial facilities aggregating approximately 385,000 square feet located at the intersection of South Fountain Drive and West Frontier Lane in Alatha. The project applicant is BCB Alatha Holdings, LLC. The notice of public hearing and cost-benefit report showing a positive 1.9%, 1.97% cost-benefit ratio for Johnson County were attached to the manager's memo. And with that, Chairman, that's it for my report.
All right, thank you very much. Next, Mr. Heflin? You have a recommendation in regards to the 2023 audit plan, which we need to take action on?
No, this is the audit.
This is the audit on succession planning.
Pardon?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'll be talking about in the next session.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman. Commissioners, County Manager, and staff, and attendees, Harry Heflin, County Auditor. This morning, we're here This morning, we're here before you to present the audit we completed here recently on succession planning, and that audit will be presented by Michael Aglinsky. He was the auditor in charge. We also have Kira Springer, who assisted with that. She's one of our newer employees also. So I'll turn this over to Michael.
Good morning. Mike Aglinsky, Audit Services. Walk you through this audit. I'm going to start with the kind of bottom line. Bottom line is that we think a written framework for succession and transition planning would help the county avoid disruptions when employees leave. That we made two recommendations based on the, on the work, and management agreed with both of those. Let me go into a little bit more detail about what we mean by succession and transition planning. So really, what this is about is how an organization manages when an employee leaves. It can be when they leave and it's expected, a retirement or something, or when it's unexpected. One way to think about it is to think about it as sort of three pieces. One is that kind of immediate, how do you manage that position that is now vacant? So that's really about positions. Another is more of the long-term development. How do you ensure employees are well-trained and up to speed and can compete when we fill the position ultimately, for that position? And finally, we think of it as about processes and documenting processes. And if you think about it, it is much easier to minimize disruptions if processes are well-documented, so that when somebody leaves, it's easy to sort of step in and, and keep the, keep the work going. It's important, because when people leave, there are disruptions. We heard from people across the county about delays in meeting community needs, about the remaining staff, when somebody leaves, seeing increases in workload, sometimes increases in stress and burnout, about people leaving and taking organizational knowledge with them, and we, we lose some of that knowledge. And of course, there are also costs associated with filling in a position. Everything from advertising, sometimes we have to fill a position with, with overtime, for example, and then training new employees. Being an auditor, I also want to mention that succession planning is considered part of a organization's internal control system, so that's another reason it's important. We found that departments across the county have been taking some steps that should help. The report itself talks about, little bit of detail about the Johnson County Library and the county appraisers, who have done a fairly broad amount of work on this. We also list kind of lots of different steps that departments have taken in different ways. We do, however, find that there are barriers to planning that remain. We talked to people across the county about this again, and the most common three barriers that, that seemed consistent across the county were that there's no county policy or procedure on succession and transition planning, that other issues are higher priorities, and there is a lack of time to plan. There were other, other barriers that come up on a, maybe on a smaller scale, or just affect one or two departments, and those are listed in the report itself. So being auditors, we say, well, let's make recommendations to reduce those barriers. So the first recommendation is to develop a county policy. Again, reminder that management agrees with the recommendations. And there's a quote here, we've sort of sprinkled quotes throughout the report from, from, I think this is probably a department head, talking about the, the lack of a policy and how it would help to have a policy. Our second recommendation is a little more in the weeds. It's about what are called transition interviews. And a transition interview is when you know somebody is leaving, sitting down with them and having a defined systematic process to talk to them and collect information. You're trying to capture that organizational knowledge that they have, that institutional knowledge. There are a lot of things that employees know that isn't necessarily written down, so you want to try to capture that. The goal of the transition interviews is to capture that knowledge to help the successor in the future, complete that. So, as again, management agreed, they are here to speak, we are happy to answer questions, and I always like to remind people that our work is available on our webpage.
Questions? County Manager, any comment you'd like to make?
As, as the Auditor's Office just said, that we agree with the recommendation to make it more formalized, they've given us some examples to start to, that can add some flexibility or adaptability by departments, and we have started to use it on some recent departures, and so appreciate the discussion, and we agree with the recommendation.
All right. Ms. O'Hara, you have a question?
Yes, and a comment. The low unemployment rate is obviously impacting the county also, but I was reviewing the, the mental health performance audit, which is, which really is reflected in this performance audit, and I just, when they asked people that are working in the mental health, because we are having a huge problem with retention there, turnover is extremely high, and when, when employees were asked how the turnover is impacting the mental health department's staff, increased stress, anxiety, and feeling of, of being overwhelmed, 42%, higher workload, caseloads, 39%, and then the question, how turnover impacts mental health clients, lower quality and continuity of care impact a client recovery, 43% of the respondents responded that that is a huge issue. So, so our inability to be able to find people to work within, within this department is, is, in the employees' opinion, really impacting the level of services. And so I think that we need to, we need to analyze this and see what, what, you know, the, the recommendations, while they're good, I don't think it's going to really have a huge impact on us providing adequate services, so I think we're going to have to start thinking outside the box.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Allenbrand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, Commissioner O'Hara is right, you know, the, the stress level of social workers, and, you know, just my experience and background in healthcare, that has just been an ongoing issue, or I shouldn't say issue, it's just, it's a very difficult position that they're working in, and it's a very high stress level. So my question is, do we have exit interviews, and are those exit interviews actually done by someone else besides the manager of that department?
I, I can speak to that, not because of this project so much as because of work we've done previously with developmental supports, and yes, the county does exit interviews. HR manages that process, and it's a, it's an online form, and they get, some employees respond after they leave, so. Yeah, we do collect. Exit interviews are primarily about, I guess, I, I think we talk about being employee engagement issues. But yes, they do, we do.
And then my last question, I, is this, could this, I know that Sheriff has a different, you know, exit plan, and, but I'm wondering if we could share this with him as well, just because I think it might be added value to his team as well. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you recall, it's been a number of years ago, we had this discussion with a previous HR director, I think it was, is it Becky Salt?
Becky Salter?
Becky Salter, yeah. Because this issue had come up about what information could be gleaned through the exit interview process, and at that time, I thought we received assurances that that was going to be enhanced and improved, so I, I, I hope that has been, because the notion of, of it being a transition interview makes a lot of sense, and that's not the term that was used previously, I don't recall, but I think that was the intent. So I think, I think that's in a line with, alignment with what HR principles are dictating now. My question, though, is, Mr. Aglinsky, is on page seven, you referred to stress, burnout, and morale problems. Were you able to quantify that? I think Commissioner O'Hare was spot on when she talked about mental health, but were you able to do that organizationally? Because my, my fundamental question is, this reports all well and good, but how are we doing in terms of succession management? Are we ahead of the curve, behind the curve? I mean, I, I don't get any sense, other than some kind of isolated comments about how well we're doing, because that's directly related, I would submit, to staff development, and we, we do spend a fair amount, at least at the executive level, on staff development, and I'm just wondering, are we, are we winning that battle, or, or not so much?
That's a big, that's a big question. Let me, let me take two, two things about it. We, in this project, we did not try to sort of quantify the stress. We have seen it in, I think, in the overall employee survey, and we've seen it in these individual projects. We looked at mental health, and we looked at developmental supports. In terms of how we stand, we didn't make any comparisons. What I can tell you is that when we talk to our colleagues in other audit shops, it is very common that it is an issue, and that people are sort of exactly where we are. Departments are taking steps, there isn't a kind of overarching framework, and it would be good to have that, so. I think we're, yeah, I, I can't speak beyond that, so we didn't try to do that comparison.
Okay.
One follow-on, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Heflin, could, what, what was the cost of this audit? How many hours?
We did about 650 hours on this audit.
Thank you.
And if I could go back to a question that you asked, Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
How we're doing with the employee retention recruitment? This is an issue that has really kind of caught a lot of people across the country, all industries, off guard since we had the pandemic. We've had more turnover. I think the turnover for the county has, I think it has peaked around 20%. That's, I'm just shooting from the hip on that, but it was pretty close. The preceding year was around, in '21, around 15%, 16%. So that is a substantial increase. And to Commissioner O'Hara's point earlier, you know, employers are finding it hard, finding it very hard to pick up employees to come in. So are we ahead of the game, behind the game? Are we keeping pace? I think the jury is still out on that. And to go one step further, if I will, the, what the county is doing, they're very proactive. And if we look at what we did with the mental health audit, if we look at what we did with the developmental supports in this audit, those are things that managers can do. I think those are things that the county can look at. Exit interviews, well, when you have an exit interview, the dog is out of the house. That's already gone, especially if an employee can do that online after they've left. You know, we recommended with the mental health audit that they conduct stay interviews. Employees are here, why did they stay? You know, the transition, you know, if you have people in key positions, what would happen if you lose that? So this is an opportunity to maybe gain, gain some of that institutional knowledge and keep it in the forefront. And that's not to say that some of those can't be combined, you know, the transition, the stay interviews. Any number of things can work, you know? So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Are there any other items? I think that concludes our management reports.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
So we'll turn to Commission comments. Ms. O'Hara?
I already spoke to the issue that I was going to bring up, and that was the landfill at 167th and Metcalf, and I appreciate staff's help on that, and we really need to continue to work on this so that we can find a solution. Thank you.
Mr. Myers?
No report.
Ms. Ansley?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank Tim Wolf at Anna Collins from Aging and Human Services, as well as Lisa Womack from Transit for joining me on November 21st. We had an informational workshop with the residents of the Santa Fe Towers in downtown Overland Park to talk about transit options for seniors, and the, the response was very positive to that information, and I look forward to continuing to offer those kinds of workshops in my district for our, especially our low-income seniors. Secondly, I had the opportunities, I'm actually the secretary of our neighborhood NEC group in Overland Park, and I attended, recently attended the, the, excuse me, the NEC monthly meeting, and at that meeting, Mayor Scoog gave an absolutely fascinating.
What is NEC?
A Neighborhood Executive Council.
Oh.
It's probably like a homeowner's, yeah.
In Overland Park, just very briefly, a number of years ago, they put together neighborhoods that are, are in the older part of the city that do not have homeowners associations into neighborhood groups. There's no fee, there are no, there are no rules, it's, it's simply to bring the neighbors together. For example, our group recently had a block party, and we were able to get some funding through the city to help us with that.
So it was probably a wild idea of a former mayor?
Probably.
I just got that.
My subdivision is, is one of those groups.
Yes, yes. And, but at any rate, the, the mayor gave a presentation at our last NEC meeting, and it's, he reviewed the annual development report for the city of Overland Park, and I highly suggest that, especially those of us who represent parts of Overland Park, look at that, because it, it answers a lot of questions that I often get from constituents, for example, about, well, how many, why are all these apartments going up? And it shows actually the percentage of apartments to new, to single-family homes has not changed in a long, long time. It has a lot of data on how development's taking place, and I'd be glad to provide anybody with that link to that website, but it, it was fascinating and very, very helpful. But again, if you go to the city of Overland Park's website and look up the 2021 Annual Development Report, I think you'll find a lot of really helpful information. So, thank you.
Mr. Ashcraft?
I just wanted to thank Commissioners Fast and Allenbrand for beginning to embrace the season at hand.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Allenbrand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Ashcraft, for letting us know to wear red today, so.
At least somebody does this today.
I tell you. Well, first of all, I attended the Marion Library groundbreaking, and you know, for me, it was interesting seeing all age groups of people in attendance, and just hearing from, from, you know, older, you know, people that, childhood age, you know, attending, and, you know, library sessions where you read a book, and anyway, so it was a, a great event, and I, that was, I, I love seeing all those in attendance, so that was, that was really good. I'm also looking for anybody that lives in the unincorporated area, especially Alatha unincorporated area, that might be interested in participating in a zoning board, if they would contact me. And I appreciate yesterday, I think it was yesterday, or it was Monday, I can't remember which day, but I was involved in a roundtable discussion of numerous businesses, and just hearing and talking about, you know, employment, how we can get there, and their needs, and so I appreciate everybody who participated in that. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Fast?
Yes, about it. I think it was a year and a half ago, I brought up and discussed how it'd be good to have an overview chart of all our boards and committees, understanding the legal and the policy, and I talked to PEG, and they've been continuing to work on it. So, and I guess I would really like us to have a COW in January to go through each of these committees and boards. I know whenever I'm an executive director, a board of directors. of directors, when you have new members start, you review your responsibilities. Only, you know, all of us are in the last four years. Only Commissioner Ashcraft has more experience and has probably served on all of the committees. So I've, you know, talked to Chairman-elect Kelly, but wants to know, would that be interest to this commission to have an hour, you know, for PEG legal staff to go, you know, go through, you know, before we decide which ones that we want to be on? I know, you know, I have no idea, what is the investment pool? Does, did the, does the chairman come to that and give investment advice? You know what I mean? There's a lot of them. You know, in my four years with COVID, I have no idea, you know, what is the responsibilities. So I guess I would like to hear from you, because if there's other people interested for an hour cow besides me.
Well, information about each of those activities have been available for decades. And so, you know, some of them, the Investment Review Group is, you know, obviously necessary to oversight the amounts of cash that are invested by the county. You know, you've got some of those, such as the Johnson County Education Research Triangle. The county has a place at that table. The, and Mr. Ashcraft is on this group, the Metropolitan Group, which has a responsibility for oversight of the funding for the.
The Bi-State Commission, you mean?
Right, the Bi-State Commission, you know, for Union Station. Now, there is no money left, or minimal money left. But, but there is a commitment to that. So having that update, I think, is good. And I'd suggest that we leave that up to the chair-elect. And, you know, the legal department can, can review those going up to that time. Mr. Ashcraft?
I think this is a good discussion, because Commissioner Fast, when this was brought up a year or so ago, I thought there was also some conversation about, concerns about the terms of people who are appointed and their qualifications.
I think that would be a secondary, you know, just in January, before we get appointed, that we just go through each and understand what each does. We've never done that in my four years. And, and that is very standard for any board of directors.
What I'm hearing you say is, and I don't mean this in a pejorative sense, but what are the needs for having those assignments and that work? Because while you may think I've served on most of them, I have not. How many are there? Are there like 20?
There is, there is quite a list.
30-plus, I believe.
30-plus, yeah.
Some of those responsibilities are identified in the county charter. So it is what it is. Other responsibilities are part of Mid-America Regional Council. And there are several committees there. The Transportation Council, that's a requirement. And so.
You also have the planning and zoning groups and the fire groups.
Right, those are.
We only, because.
Again, I would say.
We're already, and we get appointed at the end of January.
Yeah.
That's an issue.
It's well, it's well to share that information. But I think there's also a responsibility for each one of us to know what's involved there and do our, do our own homework. Ms. Ansley?
Yes, thank you. No, I appreciate Commissioner Fast bringing that up. And I think that'd be valuable. In addition, and I don't know if it would be at the same time, but for me, it would be very helpful. And I know legal has been working on this. I don't know when this will be finalized. But I think it's important for the members of the board to understand the purpose and responsibilities of the people they appoint to each of those boards and commissions. Because I'm the liaison for some that it becomes obvious to me that the people appointed don't understand their role. They think they are a policymaking board, when it's really an advisory board. And I think it'd be really helpful for us to make sure we understand that, so that when we are appointing people, we're able to be clear on the expectations.
Okay. Well, I'll be glad to visit with the chair-elect on that. And I'm sure that there would be a line as to schedule such a sharing of information. So, anything else?
Chairman, this is Penny, County Manager. I think that the other thing that the board may want to consider is there was a subcommittee that talked about some of this in more detail. So whatever we want to do in January, that may be different than the things that Commissioner Hanslick was talking about that may take longer. So that's something to consider as well, to supplement.
All right. Well, we do have scheduled at 1:30 PM a committee in the whole to receive an update on the Nelson project. And at 4:00 PM, in the lower level, we have a reception for our legislative delegation. And next week is one of our cities, I think it's on December 7th, the Overland Park Chamber Annual Report. So keep those in mind. And with that, we are adjourned. We will take a short break, come back for agenda review. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.